It's Tuesday, June 10th, 2014. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Please join the school committee in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we would like to open the floor for public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM, please. May I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Levo?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Five present.
Please note Dr. O'Leary's absence. Approval of the minutes, the regular school committee meeting, May 28th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levo seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the school committee minutes of May 28th? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes.
Thank you. Chairwoman's announcements. This evening, I have a few announcements, but I'm going to defer first of all to Cameron Boesvert from Southbridge Middle High School, Southbridge High School. He's going to come and update us on some events.
So far, at Southbridge Middle High School, we've held class elections for the upcoming sophomores and juniors. Tomorrow, there will be a middle school bullying assembly with the DA office. The 7th and 8th grade assembly will be in the morning, and the 6th grade assembly will be in the afternoon. Thursday is the 8th grade dinner dance and their Camp Fosket trip. Tomorrow, a step-up day for the upcoming 6th graders. Prom went well. Management said that we were one of the best they had, and they invite us back next year. All the AP testing and the MCAS is done for the year. Today, we had a science expo in the small gym. All week, the middle school has had a health fair with local agencies who have come and taken part. There will be some last day of school activities. They are all organized by Ms. Lamson. Wednesday, after the last exam, from 9:30 to 11:00, there will be class meetings. Students will get to meet their AP teachers, and there will be booths in the gym for fall sports signups and clubs. At 11:00 to 12:00, there will be lunch and locker cleanouts. From 12:00 to 1:30, there will be sports awards, and after that, there will be a faculty versus girl volleyball team game. On Thursday morning, there will be a video montage, which was put together by Mr. Montigny, which will take place from 8:00 to 8:30. From 8:30 to 10:00, there will be academic awards. Parents will get a letter if their child is getting award inviting them to go. From 10:00 to dismissal, there will be a picnic for grade 11 and 12 students. There will be a football camp August 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th.
Thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate those updates. I'll continue on with mine relative to the prom. I've also heard that the prom went very well. I've heard this from several people, including faculty members, who told me that the management at Union Station, Maxwell Silvermans, was so impressed with the Southbridge students, particularly because students stayed after to help clean up, which they said never happened. So, they did say that Southbridge High is welcome back anytime, and that we were, our students represented us very well. So, that's nice to hear. I just wanted to talk briefly about graduation, which was held last Friday. That was, in a few minutes, the superintendent will give us a briefing on the class of 2014, kind of a recap on the class itself, but I just wanted to speak to the ceremonies and how well they ran, and want to thank everybody for their very hard work in pulling that together, because when things appear to come off pretty seamlessly, it's usually because of a lot of very hard work. So, congratulations to the class again of 2014. Special thank you to many people who helped make this possible. Mr. Wallace, Amy Allen, Patricia Gardner, Mike Como, and the entire maintenance department, Mr. O'Connor, Dr. Garcia, the faculty and staff who came to support the students and the graduates, Christine Cook, Jennifer Carrero, Mike Montigny, and Cable Access Television, and anybody else I may have missed, but thank you again on behalf of the school committee. I just wanted to also let everybody know that tomorrow, on June 11th, we will be hosting a visit with the State Secretary of Education, Matthew Malone. He's coming to Southbridge Middle High School, and perhaps the superintendent will fill us in on a little more of his visit when he speaks and gives his report. But that is a very rare occurrence. It's something that doesn't happen very often. We talk about the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the commissioner, but this Secretary Malone is above the commissioner. So, the fact that he's coming here and requested to come to Southbridge is exciting for all of us. That concludes my report. There is no report of the representative of the student advisory committee this evening. We'll move to school committee reports under Agenda Item 8, Curriculum Subcommittee. Mrs. Donovan, do you have any report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a report. However, I would like to announce that we will have our final curriculum meeting of this school year on Monday, June 16th, at 6:30 PM in Room M100 at 25 Col Ave. And the purpose of that meeting will be to provide a year in review. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. For Policy Subcommittee, I'll give the first part, and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Quinney. But, we last had a meeting on June 2nd. We reviewed the student handbook for the upcoming school year. We'll still be working on that. Continued revisions to the district crisis manual. Our next meeting will be held Monday, June 16th, at 7 o'clock in Room M100 at Col Ave Avenue. That meeting is open to the public as all subcommittee meetings are. Mrs. Quinney, would you have anything on wellness?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes. The Wellness Advisory Committee had their last meeting last Wednesday, June 4th, in which we voted on a, the wellness policy that we had drafted, for that to be forwarded on to the Policy Subcommittee. I want to thank everybody who volunteered to sit on that committee for their help and dedication. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any report for negotiations, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Negotiations Subcommittee will continue negotiations with the Para SEA Unit B tomorrow, the 11th, at 4:00 PM in Room M100. Thank you.
Thank you. Family and Community Engagement, is there any report?
No report, Madam Chair, and there's no meeting scheduled for the remainder of the year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the report of the Sped Pack Liaison, Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next Sped Pack meeting will be Thursday, the 19th, at 6 o'clock. Again, they'll be holding elections for anyone that's interested in serving on the Sped Pack. You can visit their Facebook page if you look up Southbridge Sped Pack, and also they have a website, southbridgespedpack.com. They're, they've been talking about the spring fling and how that went, and planning for next year, and partnering with other organizations, including A Place To Be Me. And this year, I failed to thank them, but A Place To Be Me volunteered time and had some, a booth set up, providing information regarding what they do and how they're partnering with the school system and students within it. So, again, if anybody is interested in running for the Sped Pack seats, please visit the Facebook page and come on the 19th at 6:00 PM in Room M100 at 25 Col Ave. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have some presentations. I don't know if the superintendent would like to say a few words?
Yes. It's a bittersweet presentation, in that we're going to be honoring seven teachers who have collectively served almost 200 years in the Southbridge Public Schools. Not any one of them, I mean, collectively means more than one, just in case. And, and they've served up to 31 years of dedicated service. And so, they're here this evening. School committee would like to make a presentation, a small token of our appreciation for their many years of dedicated service. So, I'd like to first bring up the principal of West Street School, Mr. Dana Lab, and he can introduce the teachers and say a few wonderful things about the dedicated folks.
Good evening. First person I'd like to introduce up here, and I told her I'd embarrass her, but I really won't. I'll keep it short and sweet. Deb Bell, could you come up here, please? Deb Bell has just completed 35 years of service, and most recently, she was our intervention specialist at West Street School, supporting our response intervention program and creating our data walls, which she loves to do so much. So, she is off to spend time with her family and probably help support her daughter who is getting into the, to education now as well, following in her mother's footsteps. And I want to congratulate you and thank you on behalf of all the students and families of Southbridge. Next person I'd like to invite up is Jean Jostie. Does this come up here? Mrs. Jostie is lovingly referred to by the 3rd grade team as Mama Jostie. She has just completed 13 years of dedicated service to Southbridge, and she has supported Grade 3 as a math interventionist and done a tremendous job this year, and is always on hand, and we rely on her for, for everything, basically, anything and everything. She's always there and able to give a helping hand. And she is going to be spending plenty of time with her three grandsons and her one granddaughter, and another on the way. I was going to mention it. All right. So, you'll be very busy after, so congratulations. Sue Ricky, could you join me up here, please? Mrs. Ricky has just completed 29 years of service. 31? And she was a special education paraprofessional and supported a 5th grade classroom this year, and did a tremendous job, and will be very much missed by that classroom teacher, as I spoke to her yesterday afternoon. And you'll be spending time, I'm sure, with your daughters and your grandchildren. So, have fun, and thank you for your service.
I just want to say thank you to all the teachers I've worked for. There's been so many that I couldn't even tell you the names of all of them. I've worked in the resource room. I've done inclusion, and now I'm finishing my career being a one-on-two, and I'm going to miss the students that are moving on, and I'm going to, excuse me, I'm hoping they're going to be all right. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody, and thank you for the teachers that I've worked for. Thank you.
Next, we have Anthony Akoin, who has served the capacity of acting principal at Eastford Road School, and done a splendid job.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so very happy to be here tonight in honor of Mr. David Wood. Mr. David Wood has been working as a special education teacher for the last 34 years, and 25 and a half of those years, he's been working in the Southbridge Public Schools as a special education teacher. I've learned so much from Mr. Wood. Early on in my, in my career, I really tried to beat Mr. Wood to work, and I gave up on that within the first month. Mr. Wood's always the first to arrive at work. He's such a dedicated professional. He's still probably the first to arrive at work at West Street School. Midyear, midway through the school year, Mr. Wood was relocated to West Street School. He's always been a team player, Mr. Wood has. Mr. Wood has worked in preschool all the way up to high school, and that just tells, tells a lot about what kind of person he is, what kind of team player he is. We're going to miss David Wood a great deal, myself included, and congratulations on your retirement.
Next, we have Mr. Terry Wallace, who will make the presentation to the middle high school teachers who are retiring.
Good evening. I'm very pleased and honored to be here, representing Southbridge Middle High School, to honor two, two teachers. The first one is Mrs. Diane Allard, who unfortunately is not here today, but I'd like to mention what she has done. Over 30 years of service in the Southbridge Middle, Southbridge Public Schools. She's a finance teacher, and she's been involved in the National Honor Society, and she was someone that I got to know very well this year, and someone who always had the kids first. She was a very dedicated educator, and she'll be someone who's very, very missed. So, I think, though she's not here, I think she deserves a round of applause, Mrs. Diane Allard. The next teacher is Cheryl Craver. Mrs. Craver was spotted in Southbridge Public Schools and worked 10 years, and then took time off to raise her three children, and then came back and worked another 21 years at Southbridge Public Schools. And one thing about her is, it's always interesting to see when she walks in the morning, in the door in the morning, every morning, she has a smile on her face, and when she walks out the door, she's also smiling. So, it shows that she surely has a true love for her profession, and I'm sure she'll be spending time with her four grandchildren in her cottage at Webster Lake. So, congratulations.
Mr. Kenny? What? So, we have one other one that, Mr. Kenny. James Kenny was unable to be here this evening, and he served 13 years in the middle high school. And in honor of Mr. Kenny's retirement, I think, like Miss Allard, we need to give Mr. Kenny a hand, and appreciate it.
We'll make sure that they, those that weren't able to attend do receive their award, but heartfelt congratulations to those of you that are retiring, and thank you very much for all of your years of dedicated service. We'll now move on to the summer feeding program. Like to welcome Ms. Katie Alicia. Alicia Tilton. Tilton? Welcome and good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Avia, as you have in your little packet, it's just a little brief of what we plan on doing this summer. There is a list of locations. I would like to note that, I think I passed this in on Wednesday afternoon to Katie. The Bridge of Faith Youth Center, they're probably in the process of kind of moving right now, so Esteban Carrasco has asked if we could use his ministry on Mill Street instead. So, I have that information spaced, the same thing, just in a different location. So, um, so that, like I said, that literally changed like Friday afternoon, so that's why I didn't have the time to get it in there, and that's why there's a little star, because I knew he was going to get back to me on that. And then, there's also a breakdown about how much money is going to be spent in employees' food, supplies, and whatnot throughout the year. And for the most part, basically, I'm going to be doing the same thing that I did last year. We're going to have, breakfast is only going to be at the Y, the Grow, Grow School, and Cops and Kids, because it's at no cost of labor to us, and that's where there has been a problem in the past, being able to get breakfast under control labor-wise and production-wise. So, we wanted to go another year like that. I took Charlton Street off the list this year, because there is, from what I've been told, there's not going to be any summer programs running at Charlton Street this year, that they will all be at West Street. And the rec program, I heard they just got the okay, they will also be at West Street, so that'll be a large amount of children at West Street. We did get a grant through Project Bread, a $2,000 grant that I was just awarded. That grant is in order to help promote the program and to also maybe get supplies for them, like last year with that program, I was able to get some arts and crafts supplies, footballs, basketballs, and all that kinds of stuff to supply each of the locations with, to give them a little something to work with. So, it's not as big as it was last year, but it's something, and every little bit counts, so we'll be using that. Let me see. The estimated numbers, they are a little bit lower than last year, and that's because I still don't have numbers yet from the summer programs as to how many kids they're planning on having. So, I underestimated just a little bit, because I'd rather underestimate and then be like, wow, 500 more meals a day, than to say, I'm going to get 500 and not hit it. So, I've lowered the numbers just a little bit. And we're planning on starting July 7th, right after the 4th of July weekend, and going through August 8th. Some of the locations will close a little earlier as the programs dwindle down. The, the off-the-street eating doesn't happen so much, so to keep them open, in the past, we've learned that keeping them open when there isn't something going on there isn't very beneficial. So, as you'll see, some of them are closing on the 7th, some are, few of them are going all the way to the 15th, and I think for the most part, one of them, the 8th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any questions? No, it's all right. You were looking. You were all looking. No, you guys are...
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Alicia? Oh, you don't? Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Thank you, Katie, for coming tonight. Well, my first question that I had was on the, the cover spreadsheet that gives us the locations and the times and the dates and things like that. I just wasn't sure the, the column that said estimated ADP, I didn't know what that column stood for, what ADP...
Average daily participation, about how many kids that we plan on feeding. Those are going off of basically last year's numbers, for the most part, what, what the participation rate was.
So, that's what I, I kind of assumed maybe it was that, but when I looked at those numbers, is, do those numbers translate to the bottom of that spreadsheet where you have your estimated about how many will eat breakfast and lunch?
Yes, but it's weird, because like I have the Cops and Kids in here only Tuesday through Thursday, so that's why the numbers are a little different on Saturdays, so it screws it up. And like, that right there, the fact that they didn't get more funding to go Monday through Friday, it kind of hurts, but, because it's a great program. So, that's why the numbers are a little off, depending on the dates. It's not a specific number.
Okay, that's fine. And what is the location that the Cops and Kids participants will eat at?
Oh, it's at the community, the Armory Community Center.
At the Armory?
Everything is there. And then, sometimes they do have off-site field trips.
So, you'd feed them before they go, kind of thing?
They take everything with them. We load it up in coolers, ice them down, and...
Oh, great.
They come by at 7 o'clock in the morning, pick them all up, and they go.
Okay. And then, my last question was on the second page of the form that you submitted that, you know, shows all the expenses and the proposed budget. Is that, that, you said for the year. Did you mean the summer? Is that what it's going to cost, that bottom, that bottom number at the bottom of the page?
An estimate, yeah.
That's an estimate of what the summer feeding program will cost?
Yeah, that's just the summer feeding. That's nothing to do with anything else, because once we close out in June, we start fresh, while our bills go in a separate pile. Even if I have to order something at the end of June for summer feeding, everything goes into a completely separate pile.
And can any of these expenses be paid through the Project Bread grant?
No, you can't use it on food and supplies. It's for promoting, that's basically what it is, the CNOPC Trial Nutrition, it's to help promote your programs, and that's what they help with. They actually do supply of, a lot of free things to help us out, so they're a great program to work with.
Okay. Thank you, Katie. I'm all set, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to Ms. Alicia, or Mrs. Tilton?
I'm getting used to it, too.
So, the bulk of the summer feeding program, it's reimbursed per meal served, correct?
Yes.
So, the bulk of that money should be reimbursed based upon not having leftover food. So, if you serve however many, the meals that you're estimating, then it should break even. If you serve more meals, then we should be ahead of the game, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That is all.
Thank you.
The goal is to make a profit.
Yes.
Last year, for the first time, the program, through her able leadership, ran in the black. Prior to then, it was always in the red, and we subsidized the program. By tightening it up, having a more efficient utilization of sites and so on, we were able to make about $14,000 profit last year.
Oh, you pushed it, $7,000.
I just doubled your, your bonus, it looks like. But the point was that we were determined to end in the black. And this year, the continuation of the same program, we'll make $14,000, right?
That's the goal. We're shooting for it.
So, thank you very much.
I just wanted to say thank you to you for your hard work, because I know last year that we did make a profit, and I think that it's a program that our community clearly benefits from, given that you're estimating about 9,000 meals will be served to the youth in our community. So, thank you very much for all your efforts in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon?
Just one question, because I know last year when you did the presentation, you mentioned it. How will you be advertising this year?
Advertising? I've already talked to the Southbridge Evening News. I'm going to have her do, I forgot who it was, I think it was Chelsea or something like that. I'm going to do an article with her, get that in the paper. I'm going to be going around with the flyers. I'm going to be giving my dad a lot of pamphlets to hand out at Catholic Charities, every bag that goes out, throw a little, it's going to be a half-page advertisement, so this way I'm not wasting too much paper. Throw one in each bag that goes out, posters all over town. I had one up at the, at the Rotary, I always say the wrong thing. The Rotary last year, it was just a generic banner from Project Bread where it has the phone number of the website that you go to, because Project Bread also puts all their information on their website. We made sure last year, we put out not only flyers, but like little packets where you could rip a page off at the unemployment office, the welfare office, the, I'm not sure the name of the place on Main Street, the, the place where that lady is, where Domino's used to be.
Community Connections.
There. We made sure we set, so it's like basically hitting the big points that really are targeting the families that we need. So, it's basically what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too. Our next presentation, we're pleased to have Mr. John Matusko join us. He's the head of the World Languages Department at Southbridge Middle High School, and he comes to us regarding a field trip request to Costa Rica in spring 2016.
Yes, it is. Thank you very much for seeing me again. It's a pleasure to see you all. And I am here, as Mrs. McLaughlin said, to ask permission for a trip to Costa Rica. Our trip to Spain went so well and so seamlessly, I am, I'm looking forward to taking a trip, this time to a different part of the Spanish-speaking world, to give the kids that attend to this trip a chance to see what's out there, how a different part of the world reacts. I am coming to you very early, because I'd like to take as much time to plan as carefully as possible for a few reasons. First and foremost, I had many, many students say to me that they wished, after hearing about the success of the program and seeing some pictures and how things went, would say that, they lamented they couldn't go. So, I'd like to start early to keep the cost as low as possible. I did send ahead a packet with some information to you three or four weeks ago, and one of those, if you look in that packet, is a cost table, which shows you how much it would cost the families per month, what the monthly obligation is, depending on when the student enrolled, and that rolled all the way up until, I believe it was February of 2016. So, the chart that you see is based on the month that the student enrolls, what that monthly obligation would be. You can see that the cost is $1,000 lower than the Spain trip, which if students begin enrolling promptly, allows them the, the luxury of having a lower monthly payment. I also plan this time to spend a lot more time doing some fundraising. I had a few successful ventures for the Spain trip, and I have a couple of ideas in the works, and with the, the longer lead time, it would give us more time to raise more money to allow the cost to be defrayed even more and to allow more kids to go. My goal is really to grow this program, so that we get, every two years, we get 10, 15, 20, 25. I'd love to see 40 middle schoolers go. A couple of differences between this trip and the last is that I'd like to expand the age group out to include this current year's 8th graders. They were the, they were the, I want to use, most disappointed, I think, that they couldn't attend or that they didn't attend. I did take four 8th graders with me on the Spain trip, and because the nature of this trip is a little more physical, there's a little more physical activity, I think the older kids can handle it as well as the younger. The trip is open to everybody, and there, clearly, if it, it turned out that we had some older kids enrolling, we'd be asking for high school chaperones. So, I'd like to turn this into a combined science trip, involve the science department because of the huge nature portion of it. There'll be some horseback riding, there'll be some going through the jungle, there'll be nature walks, all of these things that would allow us to do some interdisciplinary units, both before and afterwards.
Any questions, Mr. Matusko? Go ahead, Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Welcome back, Mr. Matusko.
Thank you for having me.
How are you? The only question that I have was, I know that when you went to Spain, you used E-Tours, if I'm not...
We did. EF Tours, yes.
And I noticed this is Explorica.
Yes.
Have you dealt with this tour group in the past?
I have not dealt with Explorica, per se. However, I did research these trips very carefully, and the reason that I chose Explorica is because it's more cost-effective. Virtually the same trip at EF Tours was more expensive by about $400. So, I've spoken quite at length with the rep. I have, I know that Mrs. Camarda uses Explorica pretty regularly. I have, I know that Mrs. Camarda uses Explorica pretty regularly. She's come back from several trips. I have several colleagues that have worked through them. And as much as I love EF Tours, I think that in order to give more kids the opportunity, I'm really aiming at keeping the price point as effective as possible.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be voting on the preliminary authorization later on in the agenda.
All right.
Thank you. And next, we have a field trip request by Ms. Lisa Camarda, special education teacher at Southbridge Middle High School. This is a trip to Italy and Greece, also spring 2016. Good evening, Ms. Camarda.
Good evening. I'm here tonight seeking the school committee's permission for the international education trip to Italy and Greece during the week of April fourteenth to the twenty-second, 2016, for students in grades nine through twelve. I'm here because this is a nine-days educational trip value at two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. By booking this trip early, the cost will break down to thirty-four dollars a week or a hundred and thirty-six dollars a month. Basically includes everything except your passport, spending money, and your lunch. Academically, this trip, it touches on, students learn both classical Greece, the Persian Invasion, Hellenistic era, humanistic era, Eric, sorry, Renaissance, ancient Greek, the mathematics. It contributes to many important developments to the field of mathematics, including the basic rules of geometry, the idea of formal mathematical proof, and the discoveries of number theories, and so forth. In a nutshell, ancient Greece and Rome, Italy and Rome, offers so much in the science, the math, and the history. This trip touches on every core subject. It allows students to have hands-on experience that otherwise is not offered in a classroom. You can only teach so much than having them right there.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Camarda this evening? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know that this is necessarily a question for you. I just have a little bit of a concern with two trips scheduled during that same April break. I know that you're targeting kids nine through twelve, and Mr. Matusko, eight through ten. But given the low enrollment that we had last time, I just, I have some concerns regarding trying to build a program and, at the same time, having two trips at the same time.
Honestly, I, John and I spoke, oh, he left, okay. I think this is really awesome, because it allows the students and the parents to choose which one. And it really, I mean, as for the price, by booking two years in events, the price is so much lower. It's just so much lower. I mean, if you try and book either one of these trips and you give a year, you're talking a few hundred dollars. You're talking a card payment. And I think, right now, I have like twelve kids for this Italy and Sicily trip, and I'm like done, because right now the payment is like three hundred and thirty-one, and that's really difficult, even with doing some fundraising. As for this trip, I already have a lot of students that are ready to go. And I think, I think, I'm just going to say, I think it'd be a disservice. I think this is such an opportunity for Southbridge to step up and let these kids, I mean, I can't think, I mean, John's awesome, and I think his trip is awesome, and I think it gets kids thinking. So I'm okay with it. Who and I already spoke, we're good.
Thank you.
Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Camarda. I was wondering if you could just refresh my memory, because I know you've been here before seeking approval for an Italy trip, and I don't recall when that is, and, so if you could refresh my memory, when that is, and what is your progress on that trip?
Um, I mean, if people still come to me, that's fine, that's great. I have about, I think it's, I think it's like eight students and three adults. And as for the fundraising, we have been fundraising, but the parents are...
And when is that trip scheduled to take place?
Oh, next April, I'm sorry. Next April, the fifteenth through the twenty-fifth.
So it's April of 2015?
Yes.
And then the following year is when you want to do the Greece and Rome trip?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. Anything on this side? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Camarda. We'll also be voting on this preliminary approval later on. Thank you. Agenda item number ten, report of the finance director. Ms. Sheridan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just finishing up the May report, so I don't have a report tonight, but I will be done with it this week. So I'll have them for you guys to review and report on the next school committee.
Thank you very much. Report of the superintendent, Mr. Nembrecow?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to celebrate the recent graduation ceremony we all attended on Friday night, and share with our viewing public some of the accomplishments that the class has had. We graduated eighty-six students on Friday, and then additional nine will graduate in August when they complete their credit requirements. And the student membership, they were involved in a variety of different honor societies, and there were fifteen students in the National Honor Society. These classes earned many academic awards, including the Baoshan Lam Medal, the Venselier Medal, and the Smith College Book Award. We had, percentage-wise, a very high number of presidential scholars. Thirty students were presidential scholars, and collectively, this class has been awarded over a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in scholarship money. This scholarship money will be useful in today's day and age in paying for their education, and the students have been accepted, and they're going to attend over fifty colleges and universities. And these colleges are extremely wide-ranging and very prestigious, from the Rhode Island like Providence College and Johnson and Wales, all the way to California, to UC Berkeley, and a number of other schools throughout the South, and the local schools over here. And we have one student that's going overseas to university, like our former governor Salucci, when he was awarded his ambassadorship to Canada. He had an overseas ambassadorship. This particular student's going to University of Manitoba. It's a joke. All right, forget it. I tried, all right?
I was going to say, it's not overseas.
I guess the audience is too young to remember Governor Salucci and his overseas appointment. Had to add that in there, I just, I think it's really quite good for students from the small town that are going to spread their wings and attend schools down south, all across the eastern seaboard, out to the west coast, and also to Canada, across the St. Lawrence. And also, we're very proud that six students have also opted to serve our country in the various branches of our military. So I think a hearty congratulations to the class of 2014, and their movement forward in life. Thank you. Secondly, regarding Dr. Matt Malone's visit tomorrow, he's the Secretary of Education, and as a member of the governor's cabinet, his portfolio, he oversees all of the educational programs in the Commonwealth from preschool to the university level. He'll be here visiting the middle high school tomorrow, and we had invited Dr. Malone and our Commissioner Chester Mitchell to come, but we've had numerous visits from the Deputy Commissioner. And just one word is that Matt Malone followed me as superintendent in Brockton, so I guess he's following me to Southbridge this time around. And so we're looking forward to his visit and show him the progress that the school system has made in the past couple of years. So we look forward to meeting him tomorrow morning in the school committee. Many members who are available will be there to meet and greet, and then we'll take him for a tour of the high school. And interestingly enough, tomorrow will also be a step-up day, so all the fifth graders will be there in the morning, and then when Dr. Malone comes, you'll see them passing through. You'll probably wonder why we have so many small kids, and our basketball team hasn't done well in the last few years, so been an example of that. So that concludes my next-to-last school committee meeting. And I just want to congratulate again the retirees. It takes a lot of persistence, patience, and dedication to spend over thirty years in a school building. So I'd just like to recognize all of the retirees this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number twelve, school committee actions. The first action is a vote to approve an anonymous donation in the amount of fifty dollars to the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Olivo seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. And on behalf of the school committee, thank you to the anonymous donor for their generosity and support of the school district. Agenda item twelve B is a vote to recommend the superintendent of schools enter into an agreement with Ombudsman for the purpose of an alternative education program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Donovan makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item twelve C, a vote to conditionally approve international student travel to Costa Rica in April 2016, as presented by Mr. Jonathan Matusko, pending final approval by the school committee as detailed in district policy J.J.H. Note, final approval will not be granted by the school committee until all preparations for the trip have been completed, including but not limited to all logistical details involving transportation, accommodation arrangements, supervision, and funding. The school committee requires that final approval be sought no less than ninety days prior to the scheduled trip dates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Olivo makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Donovan seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda item twelve D, this is a vote to conditionally approve international student travel to Italy and Greece in April 2016, as presented by Ms. Lisa Camarda, pending final approval by the school committee as detailed in school committee policy, district policy, excuse me, J.J.H. Final approval will not be granted by the school committee until all preparations for the trip have been completed, including but not limited to all logistical details involving transportation, accommodation arrangements, supervision, and funding. The school committee requires that final approval be sought no less than ninety days prior to the scheduled trip dates. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Olivo makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Seeing none, may I have a roll call? Please.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Earlier today, an agenda item was added as an addendum. It was posted in the town clerk's office. Came to our attention this morning that a previous motion needs to be, a motion previously adopted needs to be amended. So I, we need a motion to amend the motion previously adopted at the May twenty-eighth, 2014, Southbridge School Committee meeting, to declare surplus and available for disposition by the town as it deems appropriate, the building formerly known as Mary E. Wells Middle School located at eighty-two Marcy Street in Southbridge, by striking eighty-two Marcy Street and instead inserting eighty Marcy Street, also known as eighty-two Marcy Street, which is located on the Town of Southbridge Assessor's map, ID backslash zero-three-five, backslash one-zero-eight, backslash zero-zero-zero-zero-one. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Donovan seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that we had seen that come through today. This is just a clarification on the address, and that's basically all that it is.
It doesn't affect the vote. It's just the legal address of the Wells Building was determined to be eighty Marcy Street, not eighty-two Marcy Street.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Note that this will require a two-thirds vote. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. There's no unfinished business on the agenda tonight. The next regular school committee meeting will be held June seventeenth, 2014, in council chambers. I'll open up for a member forum just after. I realized that one of the individuals I forgot to recognize for graduation was Mr. Kakese. He's here this evening. He was very helpful handing out diplomas the other day, so thank you, Mr. Kakese. I apologize for omitting you earlier. Is there any member that would like to make any announcements? Mr. Olivo?
First off, I would like to congratulate the teachers who retired this year. Thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the school district and the school districts that you taught in. Also, I would like to congratulate the class of 2014 and wish you all well in all that you do. I would also like to congratulate the newly-elected members of the Southbridge PTA, and look forward to working with them. And would like to also make an announcement. In keeping with tradition and supporting the students of this school district, I would like to invite you all to support one of the juniors of the middle high school, Devon Olivo, who just so happens to be my daughter, has been invited to sing the national anthem at Fenway Park for opening game at the Red Sox on June fourteenth at four p.m. It will be broadcast via NSN, and it is also the Army's birthday, which makes me a very proud father. And also, they will be celebrating Flag Day. I would just like to state that to all the children of this school district, set your goals high, and the only goal that's not achievable is the one that you do not try You can do anything you want to do, as long as you put your mind to it. And this was a once-in-a-lifetime thing for Devon last year, and it just so happens to be that she was invited back, so please, if you would like to, watch the game on Saturday.
Congratulations. Did you have any further? Yes, sir? You have? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also would like to congratulate the class of 2014 graduates and wish them the best of luck in all of their future endeavors. I would also like to thank all of those involved in putting together the graduation at McMahonfield. It was a nice evening.[1622.53] it was a nice evening. I just wanted to announce that this Thursday is kindergarten class day at Eastford Road School, and on June 17th will be the preschool class day at Eastford Road School, and there will be a volunteer appreciation day at West Street from 9:00 to 10:00, as well as a parent luncheon this Friday, and a pizzeria uno do razor. Also, this Friday, Charlton Street will be having their Flag Day celebration. I also would like to thank the Southbridge Elementary PTA for, to date, raising $10,000 in cash by collecting box tops all throughout the years, and thank them for all of their hard work. This year, in sponsoring field trips for kindergarten in certain first grade, second grade, and fourth grade classrooms to attend these field trips. Congratulations also to next year's board, the co-presidents are Sandra Aponte and Emily Olivo, the vice president is Annalise Rosso, and co-secretaries are Jen Gentili and DeMary Carrera, and the treasurer of next year's PTA is Kelly Spinelli. Good luck to all of them, and for members of the community, contact them via Facebook to tell them your ideas or get involved for next year. Thank you to all of them, and also all the volunteers on the elementary and junior high level and the high school level for all of their hard work and dedication to improving the experiences and education of the children of our school district. I also would like to congratulate the Southbridge Middle High School Band and Dr. Garcia for marching in this year's Southbridge Fest Parade, they did a really nice job, they had also invited the eighth graders to march with them, and I thought they did a really good job in the parade, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Congdon. Mrs. Donovan?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Without sounding redundant, I too want to just extend my warm congratulations to the retirees of our school district, to wish them best wishes, and to thank them for their many years of dedication. They're always the ones that are down in the front lines for our kids, and all of them, I know a lot of them personally, and they've been here a long time and given their all every single day, and I really wish them all the very best, and wholeheartedly thank them for their years of service. I too would like to thank everybody that was involved in graduation last Friday, it was a beautiful ceremony, I actually saw it running on cable access today, so if you're out there and didn't get a chance, I don't believe it was taped live, so it's running now, so please be sure to try to catch that on cable access, it was a beautiful ceremony. Also, a couple days before that, we had the first time of our senior awards night, that was the first time that that has ever been done, it went off without a hitch, and it was a very beautiful evening for our seniors, and I believe that will be running shortly on cable access, so if you have the opportunity to catch that as well, scholarships were given out that evening, as well as academic and athletic awards. Again, like Mr. Nembrecow had said, lots and lots of kids received many awards, and they are all to be recognized and congratulated for their hard work. I wanted to give a special thanks for the beautiful children that I read to for Reach Out and Read, I read to the first grade class of Mrs. Peche, they were a fantastic group of kids, and, you know, they just touched my heart, so warm thank-yous and hellos to grade one students. I also had the wonderful opportunity to be at Charlton Street School last Friday to participate in Career Day, and I went to the grade three class of Mrs. Giardello, and the grade four class of Mrs. Caplet, and during both classes, discussed about what it's like to be a school committee member. Again, in both of those classes, the kids were very engaging, very interested, asked me questions that I didn't even know the answer to, so, smart, smart kids in those classes, so, I told them to watch, we were going to make that a homework assignment, to actually watch the meeting tonight, so that they could actually see what takes place as it goes on. I wanted to announce that our elementary students are going to be putting on a show this week, it's called Phantom Toll Booth, and it's something that our drama students at the elementary level do each and every year. The show is going to be this Thursday, as well as this Friday night, the time is 7:00 PM, and the location is the Southbridge Middle High School. And again, these are kids who are in the fourth and fifth grade, so if you have a chance to come out and support them, they truly deserve your time. And finally, I wanted to say that I am very excited to meet the Secretary of Education tomorrow. To me, this is a chance of a lifetime, we have a lot to show him, a lot to be proud of, it's a huge honor that he will be with us. We know that Barack Obama will be next door in Worcester tomorrow during the commencement address for the Worcester Technical High School, so eyes to the sky for Air Force One, and I'm very excited to meeting Mr. Malone, Dr. Malone, and that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank the Southbridge Elementary PTA for extending me the invitation to participate in Reach Out and Read, I read Pete the Cat, I Love My White Shoes, to Mrs. Wayman's class, and we had a lot of fun, and they were absolutely delightful, and came with a thank you card, and just were very attentive, it was a very fun experience. I also wanted to say that West Street School is holding their Field Day in concert on Monday, June 16th, and I also wanted to say thank you to all the teachers who are retiring, without them, we wouldn't have an educational system in Southbridge, so thank you for your dedication and your commitment to our town and to our children. I was able to participate, well, view the class night last Wednesday night, and also graduation, and I think it is extraordinary, the amount of talented and gifted and dedicated students we have in our community, and if you weren't able to be there, I would strongly recommend you watch it on cable access. We, as a community, have a lot to be proud of, these parents have a lot to be proud of, and these students who are going to represent our town as they move on into the world absolutely have so much to be proud of, and we should support them in any way that we can. So congratulations to them all, I wish them all the best, and that is all that I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we have a vote to go into executive session to, number one, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel, or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 3, and, number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 2, and the chair so declares.
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Seconded by, we'll give it to Mrs. Congdon, we'll credit her. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Five yes?
Thank you. The meeting will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you, and have a good evening.